Take a moment for silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please stand and join me in reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, can we do both call plates? Matt Rooney?
Here.
Alan Ward?
Here.
John Maston?
Here.
Kathy Cox?
Here.
Nicole Cohen?
Here.
Okay, I guess we're gonna go ahead and turn it into two.
Turn it down just a little.
No, I accept the meeting. Wouldn't you be willing to accept the agenda before we begin?
Can I keep it up?
Yes.
Could you like that?
Can I get a motion to review and accept the agenda for this session?
So moved.
Second.
This turn, this night, yes.
Taking turns.
Matt Rooney?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
Here.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Is that better?
Can you guys hear that?
Yes.
Turn it over. I've turned it over.
Okay, good, thank you. Madam President, on the agenda for this next meeting, under the recognition of visitors, we will be honoring our retirees as well as some students from our career and technical education student organizations. We have ten of our advisors that are going to be here, and we'll have several students who are national winners who we recognize as well. And then we will also be having a presentation from Expect More Arizona. We'd like to share with the board that the group Expect More Arizona came and met with the city with the mayor, and the mayor brought this to our attention because they were asking the city council to sign a proclamation of support. And so what the mayor has asked is, we're in board to also hear the information and would we consider perhaps doing a joint resolution with the city if we agree as a board that we should support the organization.
During the bond and override process, that was actually an issue because we wanted to get some collateral from Expect More Arizona. My company actually partnered in with them to give collateral for that one. So it's good just to have those collateral and materials set.
They have some amazing materials available, so she will be doing a brief presentation to the board as well. We have our consent agenda. In the consent agenda, we have our minutes from our April 18th governing board meeting. And then we have our minutes from our April 11th work session. The personnel report. Gifts and donations. And then our new state, and overnight, out of state, excuse me, an overnight travel format. So we have two requests for overnight travel, one from the food club and one from the Journalism and Beer Book Club. If you wish, the board has listed any questions. And that actually concludes the consent calendar. Any questions on the consent calendar? As we move into our old business, we have the second presentation of the policies on one page too many, on the LBD and LBE, which is the Turner Schools, and then the BGD, which is the Board of Year of Regulations. Again, on these policies, there haven't been any changes since the first training. The second item on old business is the review of our JRR student surveys. We did make one change on this. Based on the board's recommendation, we have added the Children's Internet Protection Act, CIPA, to the records as noted. Five point three is our advertising policy, and that has had no changes since the last meeting. And then five point five is the Thunderbolt Handbook, and five point six is the Elementary Handbook. There have been some revisions since the board saw that first. It has been, the Elementary Handbook has been reduced down a little bit and has been reformatted. There have been a couple of grammatical changes in that. Both of the handbooks have added the information about the dress code. We are looking at having a guidance for fingertip length on the shorts so that we don't have staff checking the linse people for their short length. So that is a change in those two policies. Moving into section six, which is new business. The first item is the request during in the Taucher Food Service Contract for 1718. We actually have a five-year contract that requires an annual renewal, so this will be the third annual renewal of this contract. Questions?
Food waste. How are we currently addressing food waste within that confines of the contract? All right, sorry.
How do you mean by the confines of the contract?
Well, I have children in school, and I go from time to time, and I like to have lunch with my kids here and there. And what I notice is I notice that we're putting food on a plate, and if the child, for whatever reason, not saying that it's not nutritious or it's not delicious, but for whatever reason, that plate gets dumped. How do we stop throwing away whole apples, even some of those things?
Well, what we have been doing in the past is having shared tables for whole fruit, any wrapped items, crackers, things like that that can't be contaminated. We have had a shared table where a student can put that in a bowl, and then another student who would like, you know, another apple or something
Sure.
can pick up out of that. The health department, now we have a new sanitary, and she does not like that. So we've been working on a new system for next year
Okay.
to address that. But with the way the regulations are, to have a reimbursable meal, a student must go through the POS line and take the required items. And if they don't eat them and don't put them on the shared table and throw them away, there's really nothing we can do about it. If we just give the child a sandwich without anything else, we cannot put in a claim for that meal, you know? We don't make the regulations, the government does. This is their program that we administrate. I do everything I can, you know? We have lots of fresh fruits and vegetables.
And I'd like to visit with you more outside of this form on that
That would be great.
because, because for me, in a country where we have people that don't get to eat, we've got a school lunch program that's throwing food into a garbage bin, and there just seems to be something counterintuitive to that.
Right, I understand. Also, like the management company, and we have what's called a HASSAP plan, which is Hazard Critical Analysts Protection. And they have rules they have to follow. I mean, we can't take food out of garbage cans, but we'll sit down and talk about it. Our food waste isn't real bad. I've been at the high school, Mr. Murray was over there last week, and after each of the lunches, I went through and lifted the garbage cans. And for the amount of kids that go through, I'm real proud that we don't have a whole lot of food waste, especially at the high school level.
Do you have an idea as to what percentage is waste?
No, I don't.
Okay. And last question, if we wanted to redirect that to another entity, say a food bank or something along that line, especially on the reclaimed things where the kids didn't want them necessarily to eat it, and they're born and takers during that cycle?
Then actually, we take it back, all the apples and oranges, all the whole fruit is re-sanitized, and we reuse it again.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I have one quick thing. It's not a big deal, but watching the news, we realize there've been some changes in the requirements for school food. And we've got gloom and doom on one side and yea hallelujah on the other. If this begins to impact you in any way, could you brief us, just to let us know?
Oh, sure. Actually, right now, Sonny Perdue, our new Secretary of the USDA, was sworn in last week. He had lunch yesterday in Leesburg, Virginia. They are rolling, I won't say rolling back some of the regulations, but they're giving us more flexibility. The Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010 put in like salt restrictions at two-year levels, and starting July 1st, we were supposed to drop into a new salt level. And once you start getting rid of salt and things, you're adding more chemicals. It's hard to get bread products. In 2020, the salt regulation was so stringent that cheese wouldn't even be able to be served, or milk, a part of the milk has natural sodium in it. So it's given us more flexibility there, and they loosened up the whole grain requirement because kids just don't like 100% whole grain pasta, it doesn't hold on. So that was some things we have been asking for, and so.
Just keep us advised.
Okay, sure. Any other questions?
All right, item six point two is the awarding of bid for the E-rate eligible equipment. We actually are, you don't have that in front of you because the bid closed yesterday, and the evaluation will be performed on May 4th, so you will receive that as soon as that evaluation is performed, which is Thursday, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. You have that Thursday. Item six point three is the 1617 revised budget. I am gonna let Mr. Murray talk about this one.
I do have a copy of the actual revised budget, a copy for each of you. Yes, if you're interested. And between now and next meeting, I'd like to just have a brief, just do a brief PowerPoint, a few slides, if you will, to kind of highlight some of these revisions. Since this is a revised revision process, it's not taking a brand-new budget, as you know, and creating it from scratch, but it is taking a few data points that we received from ADE, different reports that are collected, and we then align our revisions to that information to make sure that we're both on the same page. So I will have, for example, I will have addressed the changes in weighted student count, the carry forward amount, and I will have some information from Prop 123 as well, so you can see the breakdown as to what happened in regards to the one-time, the one-time payment, and then the ongoing payments.
Are the blue highlights where there were revisions?
That's just part of the template.
Oh, yes.
It's part of the actual document itself.
Okay.
What the major revisions that occur is you look back at the new updated numbers when it comes to average daily membership from the 1516 school year, and then you make those changes, and then it'll naturally just cause you to have more dollars to make sure that you allocate, or dealer, and then there you have to make cuts. We were fortunate that we actually had a slight increase, so we didn't have
Increase from our projection.
From our projection, correct, from the adopted budget early this year, or late last year. So for this school year. So there is a slight increase. We had a slight increase in ADE, average daily membership, as well as some group B spent numbers as well, special end ELL numbers that caused us to have some growth in there as well.
You had mentioned carryover.
Carryforward, yes.
Carryforward. Carryforward was up or down, or left or right?
The anticipated carryforward at the end of last year for this year, from what I could see was, was an estimate on what we would receive from Prop 123.
Okay.
And then once, obviously, once the books close, after a few months, the encumbrances are now made available, so then now you have additional carryforward if you didn't overexpend. So that's what we, that's what I see here, and it's right on with what ADE is showing us. We estimated at the end of last year, we'd have about a 1.1 million carryforward, considering Prop 123 as being that major source of that. And we ended up having 1.878 million in carryforward. So there was the Prop 123 money that was roughly 1.1 million, 1.2 million dollars. Still working on that.
Sure.
It's the end of my sheet here for next Tuesday. And then we had, obviously, we had some expenditures, and we under-expended last year. That's good news. Yep, absolutely. All good, yes.
Mike, could I ask you, did I hear you say that we will have to pay that money back? That that has been resolved? I'm talking about the high school, the hours at the high school, the students. I heard you said that something had been resolved. I don't know what you're talking, what you were referring to. You said that one time?
Oh, and that was for Prop 123.
Oh, okay. So the issue I'm speaking of, that Jamie and Scott worked on for this semester, has not been resolved, or are we gonna have to pay that back?
I have not heard either way as a final.
David came in today and said that 1156 came out of rules today, so. When, as soon as, who will find that out first? Will you be told that first, or?
Well, I think we all have emails that are tied to certain people down at ASBO and ASBA, and as the legislature moves, we get updates as to what they're doing.
Okay. And can you let us all know immediately, let Scott and Jamie know too?
You'll be third or fourth.
I'm sure Jamie's following that. Scott too.
Yes.
Mike, I just said to Jamie, can you please forward that to us too, so I can basically sometimes see. I don't need all the other stuff that it pertains to. I'd like to be nice to where they're at.
And if you, just to help me out for next week, and on that, could you offer some input as to what you'd like to see on the PowerPoint, so I make sure that I, I have an idea on what should be presented, but I'd like to
I think where we're up and down within the striations on here, I think that's the best compare and contrast. I don't know that we need to put up a full package, but if we had certain line items that we highlighted, and then an overall sense of how that pushed this budget to where it is now, that helps.
The major push would be, the major driver is always gonna be the student count, so that'll be included on.
Right, but we, I think it's good that we present it so that the public has an idea of what actually does the push and pull in the budget at a school district.
And it would also be nice for me, it always says prior and budget fiscal year. Could we either put prior fiscal year with the date 1617, 1718, 1819, or could you do prior fiscal year ending FYE and just 17? Something so that when I'm looking at it, I don't have to every time think, what year, what year? It takes me a while to get it straight in my head, and if I just looked at the date, it would be much easier.
I would like to mention in response, Mrs. Fox, to your question about the minutes, the audit is sent to ADE, is my understanding, and so ADE would determine whether they were going to ask us to repay money that they had given us. We have not heard anything on that piece. The legislation that has been proposed, has also been proposed to hold us harmless for that. And so that's where we're hopeful that the hold harmless comes in for our district. If it doesn't, we would still be waiting on whether or not the ADE was going to assess us to do that. Thank you. Item six dot four is the approval of the governing board meeting dates for 1718. I would like to note on this that the week of July 10th, we've always had July as needed, but we know we have to adopt our budget in July, so we went ahead and scheduled the week of July 10th. We do not have a exact date. Last year, it was on a Thursday. It depends on what day we have everything ready for the board. But we will anticipate a meeting that week and try to get that date to you as soon as possible. Then the other ones that are off of our normal pattern is the Tuesday, March 13th. That one is moved forward because of spring break, and the Tuesday, May 8th is similar to this year because we have our budget revision deadline, and so that meeting is moved forward as well. The rest of them are following that normal pattern of the third Tuesday.
Are we gonna have a budget work session before we have our budget meeting to adopt it?
On the, for the, in June?
For the July?
Yes. Item six point five is the first presentation of our revised policies on audits and financial monitoring and bidding and purchasing. And these simply have references that have been added in relation to OMB advisories and also on minority-owned businesses. I know we've brought this up before, but when you see and are going through the policy and you see an area that is highlighted, that is something that the district has added that did not come in the ASBA policy.
Now, speaking of that highlight, and don't get me wrong here, the $25,000 discretionary spending that the superintendent has, is that something that predated this document, or is that something that is new in this document?
That has been in here since, I don't know when, but yeah, that was previously in the document.
Okay, and it's actually a pretty good idea because emergencies happen, and having some spending authority is a good idea within the district.
Item six point six is revised policies JAFBD, JAFBDED, and JFD Open Enrollment, and again, these are all corrections that have arisen because we have changed from NCLB to ESSA, so it is correcting that language. And then there also is, on the last one, on Open Enrollment, to eliminate some language that was not in the statute. Item six point seven is JRR and JR, sorry, JR and JRR, which is our student records. And again, these are just the legal references that are being changed in here from the NCLB to the ESSA. The same is true in the next one, six point eight, which is our unsafe school choice policy. That is a text reference. Item six point nine is the High School Student Handbook for 2017, and I believe that you all received that electronically. Item six dot 10 is the approval of sole source for Siemens building technology, and this one is requested because we do have three of our schools, is that right, three?
Yes.
That have a proprietary fire alarm system, and only Siemens is authorized to work on that alarm system.
Quick question on that. Being a sole source bid, you and I had talked a little bit. Have we approached any local vendor about becoming Siemens certified?
Not to my knowledge.
It may not be a bad idea if we're gonna have the equipment in our schools, because it seems to me that if we have to wait for somebody to roll a truck out of Las Vegas, we're gonna be waiting if we have a real issue with the fire alarm system, and that may not be such a convenient thing to have happen.
I know that because of that, in my conversations with John, because this was established well before he even was here
Right.
even got here, that this, taking this into consideration is the reason why these reconstruction projects do not have a sole source system installed in them, for example, the bus farm.
Correct.
It's because we don't wanna have this type of a situation.
I just, I just think that we could go to, say, a Western Alarm or Colorado Communications or one of the other alarm providers in the city and say, hey, guys, you know, we may need parts for something like this. Would you be interested, just because, you know, we're gonna send you some business out of getting your certification for it, you know, for Siemens?
Well, we would need to send it out to all of them.
Right.
All of them would be
No, 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 I'm giving an example, not an inclusive list.
Sure, sure.
I know that some of our alarm systems are targeted to be upgraded from the bond. Is it included in that, do you know?
I don't have that right in front of me. I'm not sure if the high school in Jamaica, off the top of your head, Smoke Tree, if they're scheduled to have their fire alarm ones?
I thought they all were because I thought they were all part of the upgrade.
The phone systems.
But I thought they were tied together.
I don't know. I would have to go back
We'll find that out off the top of my head.
I know the surveillance, surveillance systems are for every building as well.
Mr. Maston, do I understand your concern is that this company is out of Las Vegas, and if something went wrong, they wouldn't have been responded quickly enough?
That's a part of it, yes.
Couldn't we write a contract that said they have responsibility subcontract for response?
We could. We could, but
To ensure we have instantaneous response, that's their obligation.
The problem becomes, though, is that, is that when you get into someone like, say, Siemens with an alarm system, the reason why they are very particular is Siemens is the one who's guaranteeing the performance of the system through the, through the annual certification of it. And so if they have to guarantee the response of it, they're gonna want their technician to be at it. The problem when you get into the sole source, though, is that if the company's in Las Vegas, you could be waiting two, three days to get a truck down here, and that's where you wind up with a problem if you had a, if you had something that couldn't be bypassed that went down.
That's what I was getting at. Shouldn't we require them to have a means of instant response? Maybe they'd hire a local company to be available for emergency response.
I think they would have to be certified if that were the case.
What I'd like to know, has it been a problem with Siemens in the past? Have they been responsive, have they gotten down here in a timely fashion?
I can't answer that directly. John Simpson will be here on next Tuesday.
I think that is a key thing here, too. If they are responsive, because I know that you put in these systems, and all, because we had this problem years ago at the high school, I don't know if they still have it, but you put in these systems, and then you start having different people work on it. And I'll tell you, you begin to have a lot of problems, and so that's why this is the case. So to me, as a board member, the key is, have they been responsive? Do, when something goes down, do they get here in a timely fashion and address the problem? Because if you have a lot of people working on a system, I guarantee you, you're gonna have a lot of problems.
Scott, I don't know if you wanna address that. I know when I was at the high school, when the system in the front office would go down and we'd have to call Siemens, they obviously wouldn't be there the same day, but they would come out shortly afterward. I don't know.
It was pretty timely. The frustrating part, obviously, as you can, and Kathy as well, getting the phone calls at 2:30 in the morning when there's an alarm going off in the school. People up to the school to push a button, talk to Western Alarm, we've acknowledged it, everything's fine, go back to bed, deal with it the next day. it, everything's fine, go back to bed and deal with it the next day. But the number of times that happens throughout the school year is the part, and it kind of goes to what Pat's saying, you have multiple people in there working. I can give an example of the jail, there's feedback on the speaker, it's in the center of the jail. All the people that came in, laid the speaker wire, laid it. The speaker wire is right on top of the fire alarm system. Well, where's the feedback coming from? The constant feedback from the fire alarm system. So when we get multiple people in there, they're looking for the shortcut of, they've already laid the conduit, let's put our lights on top of it, that's where we run into the problems at high school.
There's, there's an order for contractors depending on you, John, by the way.
Yeah. And other things can set those alarms off. Because I went through the same thing, going up there all the time and so, you know, I'd like to have a system where you were administrators of people or the fire department isn't constantly being called to, told to the high school. I don't know if that's a problem at the other schools, is it?
I know, I know mine used to go off quite a bit at Star Line, weekends, nights, it happens.
How does it, is it not, yes?
Yeah, mine goes off like crazy. And I, we have Western Alarm at one point we've had. There's like three different groups that have worked on it. And the guy's saying, we're, we think we can get it fixed, but it's been there forever. So it goes off probably once every couple of weeks. And the warning system goes off probably once, at least every couple of weeks or once a week. The guy, Johnson's a member of, trying to keep it patched together.
They never told me that when they were going to elevate me to the principal.
Item six point one one is the approval of the general statement of assurance. And this is for, a statement of assurance for ADE that basically says we're going to comply with the state and federal laws that guide our project funding. So, and it should say it will be signed by the board president, not the president. Thank you, I'm sorry, I missed that today. Caught it, but not in time for the press, sorry. But it does, this does address the state and federal regulations that we have to comply with. And we have a person who some of you may know is very diligent in ensuring that we comply and that this is the so, that's very good job. Item six twelve is the resolution that we're asking the board to support a resolution opposing the empowerment scholarship accounts expansion. As you are aware, this was passed the first week of April and signed by the governor. And it does, it does include some information and guideline rules, whatever you might want to call it, that, that is not supportive of public education in general. I believe that the copy of the resolution is at your place.
Yes.
Yes?
Good.
Any questions on that?
Observation. I, first and foremost, I hate the fact that we're doing a resolution. You would think the Arizona State Legislature as a body would be smart enough to figure out, and it's cited within the resolution, that they are violating Arizona state law and the Arizona constitution by doing this. I would also think that the group of conservatives that they call themselves down there would be smart enough to know that creating an uneven playing field would be hurting certain members that they are sworn to protect, namely special education. There is only one body in the state of Arizona that is required to take special education students, and that is a public school district. It's the reason why you see the numbers skewed the way that you do within what a public school district takes in. And frankly, there are children within that population that will go on to be functioning adults in society, holding down jobs, and we're skewing this to hurt them. It hits home with me because I've got one of them in my home. And today I posted on Facebook the picture of her writing the date out in longhand handwriting. She does math, she's learned how to deal with money, she's 10. She can't be put in a regular classroom. We have to take care of these people. And until the legislature figures out how to deal with Arizona law, and until they figure out how to deal with the most vulnerable in our population in a proper manner, I'm going to go against what one of my basic principles is, and I'm probably going to vote for this thing. I just, it just galls me that people would do that.
I'd like to say I agree with John. I think it's a shame that we have to do this. I think, I don't want to see the board get into a situation where we're making comments on every political action that takes place in the state. However, I think in this case, this is serious enough that the board needs to do it. And in addition to that, I think we ought to give a copy to our friend up here in the front seat. Because I think the people in the community should see exactly what this resolution says. Because too many people don't understand all the ramifications of it. And we need to get the word to them that the board is doing this for a specific reason. It isn't just to complain.
I think a lot of people don't understand that on the heels of current year funding, the shortstop of prop 301 monies, and then to add insult to injury, these ESAs are now allowing kindergarteners at the age of four into the ESA programs. That's a, that's directly siphoning off children out of our public schools. And I can't help but feel like that is absolutely on purpose. So I appreciate you putting this together. I'm not a big resolution person myself, but I do appreciate that this is filled with, it's filled with, it cites where in the Arizona constitution that our legislators are violating as well as statute. And so for that reason, I think it's important that our community see it. And I hope we post it on our website if it's approved on Tuesday night. I think that would be important. Because people can just simply read through it and then they can go read the Arizona constitution for themselves. And then they can talk to the legislators and ask them, why are you violating this Arizona constitution?
It's interesting that we're bringing a document forward for you to sign assuring that we're going to follow the law.
Right, absolutely.
Sorry, cat.
I would like to bring up too that the original resolution came from, originated with the Arizona School Board Association. And they're asking school boards all over the state to please sign, approve it. But I guess it was, it was either Nicole or Diana, I'm not sure, but both of you together will realize now under ESAs that children who are four will be able to go into kindergarten. And those of you who are in education know that is just not going to be appropriate for four-year, most four-year-olds cannot handle kindergarten. It's going to really mess things up. And so maybe between the two of you noticed. So we've added that to our resolution. So when we, if we approve it and send it in, then that will include that statement as well.
We will send that to you electronically.
And, and that's not our kindergarten, that's private school kindergarten.
Yeah, we are not allowed to accept kindergartners unless they're five.
Correct, they have to be five by September first. We can't take them. But private can.
They can take them at four by September first.
And when you think about it, what do parents need to do? You know, how many, how many parents have you told your child is, does not need to go to kindergarten? Could you please hold him out another year? Well, we would, but we can't afford daycare. So you know exactly what this is going to mean to parents. It's a free place to go to school, and that will affect our enrollment further.
Item six point one three, this was brought to the board, not at the last meeting, but the meeting before. It is coming back now for the approval. We are requiring the approval of the contracted services through Educational Services for the subsource program. Mrs. Minor has done some further research on this. And so as we talk about the opportunity to use this program, one of the areas that we hadn't quite realized the implication of was the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act. And so as a result of that, we are required to write an assurance for any of our long-term substitutes. And also, of course, we've talked about the fact that they have to accrue sick leave and so forth. And so there is a attachment on the back, if you have any questions about that. That shows that for the 2015-16 year, that for this program, we would have actually spent about 20,000, almost 21,000 for that program, when you take out the cost that we spent on the substitutes. Based on the 16-17 school year, we would actually save almost $24,000 by using their services because of the insurance we would not have to pay. So that, that could go either way on any given year, depending on how many long-term substitutes. We can't guarantee. We wanted to show you that it could go either way, but that is one of the additional reasons.
Now, the 16-17 numbers, are those year-to-date numbers or are those estimated to the end of the fiscal year?
No, the wages are year-to-date. The others we just dropped down from 15-16 as a placeholder. But the wages themselves and then the health benefits costs that we are paying this year for our long-term subsidies are today.
So, so basically you took the end of the 12-month cycle of the 15-16 year in, in a fully burdened way and moved it into the 16-17 spreadsheet. Okay.
Which the actual cost savings are simply based on the health and care benefits that we're paying now. Do you include any of that? Correct. Now, I think it's important to note, not only with regard to the money savings piece, but I think it's important, and I know Nicole and I had talked about this, the indemnification that will be provided to us to protect us from any kind of fines or assessments or penalties related to both the ACA and with the proposition going into effect on July first regarding all of the tracking.
Is there any internal staffing cost savings on this or is this, or are we staffed neutral based on putting this in?
Were staffed neutral, however, the time and effort that the current employees are tasked with right now will be removed. I know in payroll, they spend at least one complete solid day every week gathering all of this information for our substitutes and getting it prepared for payroll. So after talking with them, so that would remove that barrier. And then as well as our subcoordinator in the front, as far as onboarding and all of that that she does each year, the training and so on and so forth will be now done by ESI. They're actually going to come here and do that onsite.
So outside of classroom time in the district office, if I were to come and substitute teach for the district, what would that look like? Am I, am I going to be coming in, you're going to give me an ESI package of some type, and then I'm on boarded at ESI? And I just get my assignment through AESOP or?
Correct. What ESI would like to do is they would like to come up as early as end of May, June to actually meet with our substitutes and provide them an onboarding time here to help them fill out the paperwork. Otherwise, it would be an online process regarding the application itself. They use AESOP already, just like we use AESOP. So as subs pick up jobs, it would be no different than what they're already doing. They would still work with our subcoordinator and the principals and so on and so forth.
So once onboarded to the end user, to the employee that we're using as a substitute, there would be no difference from where we are now?
Right. Other than they would be getting their paycheck from ESI.
Okay.
Item six point one four is the renewal for our more end sharing with the, I don't know if you say WACOG, WAECOG?
WAECOG.
WAECOG Head Start. And this would be for the preschool special education services for 2017 through 2019.
How, how many classrooms, Mrs. Walter, are used, each of these sites by this program?
Actually, this agreement, we have actually three different agreements with WAECOG. The one that you may be thinking of is the one that we actually have a intergovernmental agreement where they are in our classrooms at Nautilus and Orang Ronde. That is not part of these agreements, but there's one classroom and one office at Orang Ronde, and there's two classrooms at Nautilus that are being used that particular.
When you say one classroom and one office at Orang Ronde, what?
It used to be the psych office. It's right there adjacent to the classroom that they're using. There's a door that allows them to be able to monitor the classroom. And six point one five is a similar agreement for kindergarten transition activities with WAECOG and the Head Start. And that cover memo should read through June 30th, 2019.
Is it correct that these are three and four-year-olds that we're talking about, but they are not ready to go to kindergarten yet developmentally, to our maturity? There's nothing, they, they must start our kindergarten. If their parents choose to open in our class, can we counsel the parents out if the parents, are we able to counsel the parents out or do we have to find a placement for those children who are not ready to start kindergarten yet?
Well, actually, this program, this addresses the fact that it's a requirement that we work with WAECOG to help a smooth transition for students who are transitioning that are school-ready. If they are having difficulty or having challenges, that's where that child find agreement where we may already go through and identify them, if they may be identified as needing special education services. What this is, is trying to maximize the opportunity for students to smoothly go into our schools. We have talked to the director. We do know that the programs are located throughout the community. So families that do live at the north end, Nautilus is generally their home school. Same thing at Orang Ronde, we have the Pima site that's located across from Smoke Tree. That's not part of the school campus program. But again, centrally located, it's families that may not have transportation. Most students do transition into our public school, parents do have the option to go or just any of the public programs, but most of them do participate.
But the question is, if a child doesn't have any, any issues that would, where you identify for special ed services, he's just sitting in a tour, not ready to enter, sorry. Is there any, is there anything if the parent won't go for that? And we try to counsel the parent out? And, and you know, the parents aren't likely because they have the same daycare issues all parents have. So if there's, we have, we have.
Do you have to enroll any student who's ready? School age, 12, 15, 16?
And even if he's still four?
No, these students, as long as they're five years. These are students who are age five.
To give you an example of how this works, my daughter, when she was, was close to being school-ready, she would go, I don't know if she was in kindergarten at that point or still at the, at the preschool, but she would go in the morning to, to the one program at the developmental site that we have, and then would spend an afternoon at the Head Start over at Nautilus. And, and what it does is it, is it allows for a little bit better, especially the special needs students, a little bit better assimilation into the classroom, a regular classroom setting. But it was quite clear that when they hit five, we have to, period. And regardless of whether they're ready or they're mature.
We often counsel parents out though.
You can, you can, but, but if they want it, they get it.
What do you mean counsel parents out?
We, 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 we used to do an extensive. We, 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 we used to do an extensive kindergarten pre-screening, it was called the yellow grid, we don't do that anymore, but we still, we, there's an assessment of the kindergarten, of the child who the parent wants to enroll and during that assessment period, if the kindergarten teacher's doing the assessment feels that that child is not ready for kindergarten, it's usually immature, just there's nothing wrong, it has nothing to do with the child's intelligence, then we let the parent know and often if the parent is able to do it, it usually comes down to money, if the parent's able to do it, we can counsel them out. Also, once the child starts, that's another thing we say to the parent, is once your child starts, let's see how successful he is, how is he doing? And a lot of times those kids end up getting retained at the end of kindergarten. But regardless, there's a, we do it each other, communicating with the parent, because the most, single important thing is that any child entering any grade level, including kindergarten, is ready to be a successful child at that grade level. He's ready to be a successful kindergartner. And those children soon figure out, they think they're not smart and they're not able to do what the other kids are. And that, to me, is the most heartwarming thing that happens to a child who's immature is because he sends that message to himself and I, it's something I, an issue I care about a lot. So all children, for these, you know, for these children, to, some of them who are going to be more vulnerable than others and don't have a lot of choices, I would never want that message sent to those children, well, you get to go to kindergarten and, but you're not really ready, but you're, you're going to go anyway, it's a delicate situation.
Regarding Or Grande, we did, still do the elementary school, we did it this past weekend.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure if any other elementary school did it, but we did do it on Saturday.
Okay.
And so it is, but it is going through, I mean, as you know, it's a, they take them through, it is a precursor for us, so they do acknowledge, but if they are five, we take them, but it gives us a heads up as far as where they go. So I did want to ask, what is the transition like? Is there, is there a procedure or process?
They need with the building principle and that's the big thing, is looking at that whole piece, making sure they're aware and they're attending information, making sure the registration packets, information's getting sent home to the parents. Again, it's helping with that piece, but also if there are concerns regarding the student, if they have that opportunity to kind of staff with the administration and make that transition smooth so that the staff are prepared and share information on that.
I didn't know staff was involved in that transition or just our building principle?
And according to the contract, one of the things they offer are kindergarten staff presentations at the Head Start parent committee meetings. I don't know whether we have taken advantage of that or not, but, and then also parent field trips to the kindergarten classrooms for transitional children.
That's why I'm asking, because I'm at Or Grande and I want to know if we are doing it or what we are supposed to be doing.
But it would be with the kindergarten staff.
And they do, the parents come with the kids and they come toward the building, they come in with us and our special education resource and the kindergarten teachers are all involved in the transition aspect of it.
Item 616, this is a request to approve in agreement with Soliant, you might have heard that name before.
Like every month?
The contract is full psychologist services, so if you haven't seen this, we'll cite one. This would be for the 17-18 year, not to exceed 115,000. This one is a little bit more because the site does work more days.
And is this an existing employee or are we still trying to fill this?
This is not an existing employee, this is a contracted person who's not been part of our district. This year we had the two openings and we're not able to fill that. We did do some restructuring, but I can tell you I don't want to lose the two psychologists that I currently have, because it's been very challenging maintaining that case with the entire district. The challenge isn't just compliance and doing what we need to do for evaluations, but the school psychologists do more than just testing, they are there on the front line when we have a crisis, we need to do a needs assessment, we have a child who's demonstrating some very volatile behaviors, they're part of that crisis response coming in and working with them. Then again, they also provide support at the building level for more at-risk, particularly challenged students, we have that extra level of support at the building. And they haven't been able to do that very much this year because.
But they have identified the candidate to fill this position.
Correct. Here's where we're fortunate, the person who we're looking at is a very skilled school psychologist, the doctorate level, and has quite a vast background working at multi-grade rooms, so, and our caselos did not scare him away.
Does this contract have a buyout in it?
Yes, just like the one that were presented previously for the obfuscation therapist, there is an opportunity that I think possibly may be interested, they decided to stay in this area, they're interested in relocating up this way.
Item 6.17 is the first presentation of our policy GCCA professional and support staff sick leave. I think this is the first two-page memo you've had. This is a very comprehensive change in policy and I'm actually going to ask Mrs. Minor to talk a little bit about what this is. Okay. A lot of this, well, I shouldn't say a lot of it, some of it has to do with Prop 206 and what will be going into effect on July 1st. And then, as you can see, they have changed a lot of the descriptors as far as who is able to use the sick leave and why they can use that sick leave. And that's really kind of it in a nutshell as far, and all of this is based on Arizona statute, because I've looked it all up.
So are we giving separate sick and separate vacation or are we doing paid time off?
We are giving separate sick, separate personal days and then those who get vacation days get vacation days. Not everyone has vacation days. We have our admin and our support staff that work full months on vacation days, so. So there are several pages of new manhood in this. And again, I know Mrs. Minor spent quite a bit of time making sure that all the language that was proposed by ASBA was in statute. We did have some questions. Six.18 is our approval of vouchers and student aid funds and auxiliary payments.
I do want to point out that 5.25, we can't work the process of adding that to the summary sheet. That is auxiliary, so quite a few of the, some of the detail is actually included in the packet, but I did want to put a line there with an actual total there so it's easier to reference. So it's just, it's not as simple as just a couple clicks and adding that, where I actually have to get that from another, another office or another cubicle, if you will, and that sort of thing to a document. So I am hopeful to have that for my next one.
Thank you. And that concludes the action items. In the information section, I did want to point out that Mr. Gardner and his educational services monthly update. Since you are approving the assurances for all of our grant dollars, the summary this month includes all of the areas that happened through the grants department. And so this gives you a little bit of a summary of that. And then in the personnel update, Mrs. Minor has given you a little bit of data that we also referenced when doing the ESA resolution, but also some information on our staffing, where we were as of the time that this was written. That information is there, available? Any questions? No questions for me. Any questions?
I have a question about the Starline student who made the presentation about the shirts at the last board meeting and I'm wondering if there's been a follow-up or if there's a plan to follow up on that, if the principals, elementary principals have it on their agenda? I just don't know.
We actually have agendized the dress code for our next AT meeting, initiative meeting, and so we will be talking about that, not specifically in relation to that presentation, but generally. Okay. Any other questions? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Helen Ward?
Yes.
Peck Learning?
Yes.
Don Madison?
Yes.
Kathy Carr?
Yes.
Nicole Owen?